Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the August 10, 2016, meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission. It appears that all members are present. I would ask that everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we get our staff to introduce themselves, please?
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
I'm Cody Morton, the Attorney for the Planning Commission.
Jerome Fournier, Planning Director.
Eric Poche, Planner.
Sean Chereau, Engineering Reviewing Agency.
Lance Bratton, Zoning Official.
All right. And I do want to welcome our new Planner, Mr. Poche, here at his first meeting with us tonight. Thank you for coming and congratulations on the new job. All right. The next item is the Chairman's comments. Tonight, the Chair has no comments. Moving on to general business, the Chair, however, will recognize Mr. Fournier, who has a presentation for us.
Yes, I'll be very brief, but I wanted to let the Commission know that Staff is implementing, and we'll get started on Phase Two of the EPA Lake Pontchartrain Basin Restoration Program. This is a program through EPA and through the DEQ where we're going out and testing the waters of Ascension Parish. We have gone through, Parish Council has approved the purchase of two pieces of equipment that we're going to be placing in the waterways. And we're going to take the analysis of that, of the data collected through that process, and do an analysis and give it to the EPA. We're trying to clean up the waters that are leading into Lake Marpaugh, which in turn lead into Lake Pontchartrain. We're going to implement that program in the next couple of months. We're going to do training for our staff. And I wanted to do this now because it has implications for some of the items that are further down on the agenda. So I'll plan on later giving you a full preview of that project at a later meeting and fill you in on, in details on that, okay?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to item number seven, we have to approve or deny the minutes of the July 13 Planning Commission meeting. We're going to do, we got two sets of minutes, Planning Commission and then the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission. So on the minutes of the Planning Commission, do I have a motion regarding that?
Some motion.
Motion by Mr. Christie to approve, second by Mr. Dumas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. And then 7B, approval or denial of the minutes of the July 13 Joint Planning and Zoning Commission?
I have a question on that.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. Stacy first sent these out. But on the first motion, under zoning review for the Culverdale subdivision, there was a motion by Doug Foster, and then they, it says there was another motion was made. Didn't that first motion die, for lack of a second, before the motion came up to amend it? What do you remember?
Well, I don't recall if there was even a vote. I think there was just a motion to amend. I agreed to allow the amendment, and the amendment went forward, and the vote went forward as amended. That's my recollection of it.
Was there a second to the first motion?
Again, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I've...
Well, I know there were some that, because the same thing applies to the next one on the...
But I mean, again, procedurally, I think Mr. Dumas was the one that brought up the amendment.
Right.
So I would presume that that was a second to my original motion, since I was allowing it to be amended.
Well, actually, Mr. Foster, I was going to comment that what I thought happened was is that I, I basically asked to amend your motion. You agreed to it, so the motion was amended, so the second paragraph should read that amendment to the motion was recommended and it was accepted by the maker of the motion. At least that's the way I remember it.
They didn't seem to follow.
Sure, sure.
So do we have a motion to approve the minutes as...
We've got another one on that.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Moving too quickly for you.
That's all right. This is B on the, for the industrial design. Again, the motion was made by Mr. Dumas to recommend approval, and then the next thing you know, there was a motion made by Mr. Douglas. I'm pretty sure on that one, that one died.
I think that motion was not seconded in.
Right.
It should be reflected in the minutes, and that's where the second motion came from, because you can't have a motion and a motion.
So do you want to, do you want to move to approve the subject to the comments that we made here tonight?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Dudley?
We got to go back real quick, and we got to rescind our approval, because we already approved it, and then you can motion for whatever.
I thought you just approved the...
Under 7A.
No, this is 7, we're on 7B.
7A is good.
7A is okay.
I don't have a copy of them in front of me, so...
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Dudley to approve the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission minutes as amended per our discussion tonight. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chasson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Moving on to item eight, on the consent agenda, do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Dumas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. All right. Item number nine, public hearing to approve or deny the following family partitions. 9A is the Agnes C. Babbin property, lots 7A1, 7A2, and 7A3, Earls &amp; Associates. Mr. Faugou.
Yes, James Faugou, representing Earls &amp; Associates on the Miranda, in the Miranda family, on the following family partition. This was deferred, postponed to this meeting, made the corrections that Mr. Julio Dumas requested, asking the Commission for approval.
All right. Staff, do you have any comments on this?
Staff is going to hold the same position that we had last month. We recommend denial based on the fact that the requested variance does not reflect an unnecessary hardship as far as the time of ownership goes. But if you do choose to, to accept it, that the existing servitude, all owners along the existing servitude sign the plat.
Has anybody, well, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
Brian Miranda.
Mr. Miranda. And for all of the, all of you who are here and wish to speak on any item on the agenda, you absolutely have that right. We would ask that you fill out a card beforehand, and there is a three-minute time limit, so we're not here all night. Please respect that time limit. There should be a clock in front of us that shows you how much you have. So that being, that's for everybody. But Mr. Miranda, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, we're applying for hardship partition. My daughter, we have a small family. My daughter and husband have two small children. They have a child that has medical needs, and my wife is a primary child caregiver. And I bought this property that we can both build and live next to each other. And we asking that, since this child has needs, and my wife is a primary child caregiver, and my daughter and son-in-law both work long hours, and so we asking that we can, a family partition, so we can build next to each other, so we can help these, my family and these children. We believe in a strong family, and we want to help our kids and grandkids.
Thank you, sir. I'm assuming, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Miranda? Does anybody else sign up to speak on this?
No.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any comments or questions by the Commission?
Mr. Chair, if I may. I've spoken to the, to the Mirandas, and I'm going to first state that I'm not exactly what you would consider a fan of family partitions by any stretch of imagination. Mr. Faugou is well aware of that. He's been, been working with me on several in the past. This is, as I said last month, if there was ever a family partition that, like the proverbial quack that walks like a duck and swims like a duck, it's a duck, and this is a true family partition. These folks are trying to provide their daughter and their grandchildren with the needed family environment to really, really thrive and do it in a financially reasonable manner, which is why they're seeking a family partition. So, you know, I'm confident that they meet the purpose and intent of a code of what a family partition is. I also feel very strongly that the purpose of that three-year was to discourage developers, and it was never, ever anybody's intent to really impede family partitioners that were true family partitions from being hindered. Unfortunately, the code is written in a very simple manner. But, you know, to that end, I strongly feel that this is one that we should, should approve, and I'm going to make a motion based on, on their justification that we approve it and approve the variance as requested, so that they can proceed and move forward.
And I agree with, with everything you said regarding that. So we have a motion to approve the family partition. Are you subjecting that motion to the, the people along the servitude signing off on the plat?
Yes, I believe that's a requirement, yes. They would have to do that.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I move.
Second by, motion by Mr. Dumas, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have a roll call vote.
We need a roll call vote. Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
No.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Mr. Chasson?
No.
Mr. Foster?
No.
So is that three to three?
Three to three, you need a vote. No, is it, was it three to three?
Yep.
You got the roll call, yes, we need a vote to break the table.
Well, as, as I stated before, I'm of the belief that this is what a family partition is designed for. The three-year requirement that we put in has, has been long debated, and it was as, exactly as Mr. Dumas said, to discourage development, developers from coming in or people acting like developers, even though they may not be developers per se. So given that, and given the fundamental right to use your property, which I strongly believe in, I'm going to vote in favor of the family partition as moved for by Mr. Dumas. So being that, the motion passes and the partition is approved.
Thank you.
Item 9B is the Jerome Babbin property, lots A1, 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 A2, and A1, A3. Mr. Faugou seems to be your night tonight.
Representing the Babbin family, on the following family partition, comments were made, addressed, corrected on the plat, asking the Commission for approval.
Staff?
We recommend approval. All our comments have been addressed.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Has anybody signed up to speak on this issue?
No.
We will close the public hearing. Any comments, questions, or motions by the Commission? Do we have a motion?
Move that we approve.
Move by Mr. Bishop. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dumas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. The partition is approved. Item 9C, the Amy Smith property, lots 3C1A and 3C1B. Mr. Faugou?
Representing Mr. Dixon, on the following family partition, asking the Commission for approval.
Staff comments?
Staff recommends approval. All our comments have been addressed.
We'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
No.
We will close the public hearing. Do I have any comments, questions, or a motion from the Commission? Motion by Mr. Chasson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Dudley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes and the partition is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faugou. Item 9D, the Mark Pierce property, lots CC1A through CC1F, McLean Taylor Incorporated.
Ellen Jackson with McLean Taylor Incorporated, representing the Mark Pierce family partition, asking for your approval.
All right. Staff comments?
Staff comments have been addressed. There is one comment that I realize, there are a couple of redundant signatures that I'll ask that they remove from the final plat before it's signed. And there was a building that we requested, a note be put on the plat that stated it would be removed before the final plat was signed, and I got pictures the other day that the building has been torn down as requested.
So everything's...
Everything has been, been done.
And you recommend approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
Leo Wilson.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, on the project that Mark Pierce is trying to do, we have four other people that own property joining that property, and we are asking that he don't block the route away for the rest of the people that own property that's joining his property.
Just want that to be known.
Staff, can you direct that? Is there, I'm sure you're not blocking, landlocking anybody?
No, so there is...
Or would approve any landlock of anybody?
A lot to the south of Mr. Pierce and Ms. Samuel's property that had an existing 50-foot servitude of passage on it. Mr. Pierce put a 30-foot servitude of passage. The only requirement that we had on, on the plat was that the owner of lot CC2 signed the plat as a predile servitude agreement. There is nothing that would, would preclude or block anybody else from, from accessing their property that we could say.
Has the owner of CC2 signed that predile servitude?
She's, she's going to be required to sign it before, before your final, before your signature, before it's final approved.
Any other, anybody else? So, Mr. Wilson, they've addressed that issue to make sure you're not blocked in.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Has anybody else signed up to speak on this issue? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have any comments, questions, or a motion by the Commission?
I have one comment. I have a professional association with Mr. Pierce, so I think I need to disclose. I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Please note the minutes of Mr. Foster's recuse from this. Mr. Dudley, yes, sir?
Yes. The only question I have is trying to see where there's access to all these lots of Pierce Road. I see a concrete, oh, all of that is going up through. That's a servitude. Yeah, that's a servitude. Okay. All right.
Oh, he's, he's got it.
That's taken care of.
Did you, okay, you found it, okay.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, to approve with the contingent that the redundant names be removed and corrected to satisfaction of staff.
And do you want to add in that CC2 required to sign the predile servitude grant on the right of passage?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Dumas. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Christie. All in favor, except Mr. Foster? Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. The partition is granted. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Moving on to item number 10 on the agenda, public hearing to approve or deny the following subdivision plats. 10A is the Hollows of Dutch Town First filing, and that's MR Engineering and Surveying LLC. Is, I know, I saw you here earlier. Mr. Robertson?
Good evening. I'm Mickey Robertson, 9345 Interline, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I'm here tonight representing the developers of the Hollows of Dutch Town, and we have addressed all of Staff comments. We've completed all of our punch list items. Those have been signed off on, and so we're just here tonight to ask for approval of the first filing. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Staff?
Yes, this is Sean, Engineering Reviewing Agency. I'm just, there are a couple items, I think we had on our project closeout list stating, requesting some notes on the final plat. I don't see some of those in his final package, so I was just asking, should you all decide to approve, just, just to keep things, just, I would say, just approve contention upon addressing any outstanding items that's on this punch list letter? Just give us a little more time to check some things before the final plat is presented for your signature.
Okay. And just to be clear, these are what you would consider punch list items?
Yes, usually just some minor notes and stuff. There's some newer notes and things that aren't on the standard final plat checklist that we're asking consultants to now put on, that we're still working out some of those kinks. So, yes.
All right. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No.
Nobody's signed up to speak, so we will close the public hearing. Any comments, questions, or motion by the Commission?
Move to approve subject to satisfying all the Staff requirements prior to signature.
We have a motion by Mr. Dumas, second.
I second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No.
We have one in opposition. We need a roll call vote, or at least I heard in opposition. Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
No.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Mr. Chasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right. The vote count is five to one, so the ayes have it. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Subject to the contingency.
One of those D's.
All right. Item 10B would be Legacy Oaks First filing, Quality Engineering and Design. Mr. Jimmy Percy is here tonight, gracing our presence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Good evening. Jimmy Percy, on behalf of the developer tonight, this is for Legacy Oaks. Just a couple of very quick comments. We have met with Counsel for the Commission as well as with Staff. Punch list items, as I appreciated, have in fact all been resolved. You will notice that there is a recommendation for denial from the Staff. That, it's my understanding, that recommendation for denial was prior, I think it was actually placed into the record about a week ago. Since that time, what we have done is, and let me address what the issues have been with the Staff, and the Staff can correct me if I'm wrong in any way. One of the issues was, this is a situation where, at the time they were requesting final inspection, they hadn't, the Energy Power Company, as well as the Water Company, hadn't completed the utility hookups out there. And you actually have a provision in your UDC in Ascension Parish that you can obtain final approval of the final plat if you post a bond, a performance bond, for those items being completed. We met with Staff, communicated with Staff, and actually produced and filed a bond with Staff for that issue. Unfortunately, the bond, according to the Staff review, and we're working with Staff on this issue, the bond didn't meet the formal requisites of a performance bond, and I've discussed this with Mr. Martin. What we are asking tonight is for approval, just like as a punch list item, subject to, with no final execution of the final plat or recordation of the final plat until compliance with and the submission of the appropriate performance bond for those issues. The other issue, despite the fact that there are, all of the punch list items have been resolved, I've, I've spoken with Staff, and the Staff has raised some question about the stormwater plan and compliance with the stormwater plan. We've also met with the Staff about that, and we've assured Staff that we don't expect and are not requesting final execution of the plat until we have resolved those issues with Staff. We have our consultant here tonight that's prepared to address all these issues. We believe we are in compliance, but we understand what Staff's questions are, and we have absolutely no problem with asking conditional approval, conditioned upon submission of and approval by the Staff of the appropriate performance bond, and approval by the Staff of anything regarding the stormwater plan. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the Staff, if I've misstated or in any way confused the issue, they can address that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. But again, we're asking for final approval. All of the issues have been resolved, with the exception of the performance bond form and submission of a performance bond in the appropriate form, and resolution of any issues with regarding to stormwater with the Staff.
Staff?
I'm really happy that the gentleman came up, and we were definitely able to work with him. Our recommendation was denial based on the fact that we were not able to complete the inspection. That has been done, as the gentleman noted. One of the problems that we had was that electrical was not installed. We were not able to inspect the sewer facility that we're taking over, because we weren't able to power it up in order to make sure it was operational. That continues to be the case, because the electrics, they're installing the electricals right now. So that said, as the gentleman said, they're posting a performance bond. We haven't used those before or in recent years. This will be a first, and to assure us that everything's going to be operational, and that performance bond will cover half the cost of the sewer facility, okay?
And that's provided for in the ordinances?
The ordinance does provide for that provision. Yes, it does. I wanted to show, I need to get up there and do the thing. As I mentioned before, we're trying to do this Pontchartrain Basin study and look at the water quality around the parish. One of the things that we're really emphasizing these days is the SWEAP plan. The SWEAP is called the Stormwater Pollutant Prevention Plan. Every developer has to file a plan, and it basically assures us that they're trying to retain all the pollutants with on their site. This photograph I'll give you right now, I think, John, if you could put that up there. This was taken last week, and this is New River, and we can see all the debris coming into New River from their site, okay? This, this photograph was taken this morning, or maybe this afternoon, in fact, and you can see, they have complied, or they're trying to comply with the program. We've reduced some of the pollutants that are coming from the site into the river, but this is a major waterway within Ascension Parish, and so we're trying to control these things, and we're, through the implementation of the SWEAP plan, all right? I've been assured by the developer that they're working on this. They've been out today, they were out yesterday, and they're trying diligently to comply with the program. So I'll leave it at that. I'm available for, for questions. Thank you.
Any questions of either Mr. Percy or Mr. Fournier? Let's go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
Yes. Ronald Daigle.
Mr. Daigle.
Yes, I live directly across from this development, and you guys have seen me before. There are several large oak trees on this piece of property that the developer had in the original plan to retain. They've already, from what I can see, have severely stressed if not killed one of the large live oak trees by putting too much dirt on the roots to cover in the roots. I have an email and a copy of it, if you want it, from the American Live Oak Society that tells you you can only put one to two inches of dirt at, at any given year on the roots, or it will kill the tree. I propose you reject this until they do something in order to save this tree, as well as some of the other trees that are filled down the road, may have some problems, because they also have some roots, some dirt on the roots, but not as close to the tree as this tree. This tree is in the southwest corner of this development, is not the large tree. The large tree in that southwest corner is, from what I'm gathering from this email, over 100 years old. They've done some work around the roots on it, but it doesn't show any signs of stress. But I believe this is something that, as a community, we need to pay attention to a lot of this vegetation, because we're losing so much of it, especially something like this that's native to the South.
Thank you, sir. Has anyone else signed up to speak? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this. Commission, yours?
I had a question, I had a question for Mr. Fournier about the performance bond. You said if electricity gets, gets, electricity gets hooked up and you're able to power up the sewer plant to make sure that it works, and it doesn't work, they're only going to cover half the cost of replacing that? Did I understand that right, or did I misunderstand that?
The bond they're posting covers half the cost of the, of the plant. They will be responsible for any corrections to that once we power it up, right?
So is the school responsible for the other? Have the school is using the other, the same sewer plant? Is that correct?
I'd have to defer on that question. I don't know the answer to that one, but...
They are not.
They are not.
They are not.
They're still responsible under a warranty period.
Well, and that's what I was going to tell you guys. Also, in additions to this performance bond, which this, this is just to ensure the satisfactory
which this, this is just to ensure the satisfactory construction of these projects, they also have to issue maintenance bonds for one year on all of the public improvements in these subdivisions. So we'll have a maintenance bond, so if these things don't work or they fail, we can always enforce our maintenance bond within a one-year period. Just didn't want y'all to confuse the two bonds.
And if I'm, if I might, the amount is actually called for by the ordinance, by the U D C. So that's why it's posted in that amount, but that's really to cover the full and complete construction, and if there is any issue after it's powered up, it will cover getting it back up and running.
And just to go a little further, the ordinance says that the amount is approved by, has to be approved by the Designated Engineering Review Agency, so Sean actually reviewed this, and if you guys have any questions as to how he calculated the amount, I'm sure he can answer it.
What about the, uh, the trees? Is there any provision in the code as to, other than the amount of green space and trees that need to be in subdivisions? Is there any provision about, uh, the existing oak trees on the, on that land?
I don't believe, I guess you can check with staff to see if what was in the construction, uh...
We're gonna let, um, Mr. Brock will be able to answer that question.
There's, uh, in the code for pre, uh, tree preservation, they get credit for that, but other than that, that's basically it.
They get credit for that?
It's not required.
That goes into the green space requirements and...
Correct, yes, sir, yes.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if, if I might, we, we actually have a tree consultant, and we are actually saving more trees than was originally proposed in the initial plan for the subdivision, and we are trying to take care of these issues. As everyone can imagine, it's tough, and trees get stressed for a number of different reasons, and we're trying, and we'll be happy to meet with the resident to see which particular tree and, and see what we can resolve. But we've actually got a consultant that's working with us to save even more trees than we had originally proposed.
Anything else from the commission?
I'm just gonna say that it's, I, I found that it's, um, a lot of times the development requirements and the goal to, to preserve a, a large existing tree are often in conflict because we have to meet minimum grade requirements, but those aren't the natural grades, and the tree needs to stay at its natural grade in order for it to survive. So a lot of times we have this conflict that puts a developer in a very difficult position to preserve a tree.
So if we, if this gets approved tonight, staff, we need to, obviously, compliance with the bond, but also a, uh, a stormwater plan in compliance with the, the standards that you mentioned, is that correct?
Yes, we will work with, um, with the developer and his, and his consultant on that, absolutely.
Anything else from the commission? Now do we have a motion?
Well, it sounds to me like, like staff is, is working diligently with the, with the developer to, to get to that point, and, and I guess it's reasonable to think that this could get resolved in the next thirty days. Getting power to, to something and getting the pump tested and what have you ought to be fairly straightforward. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve subject to complying with all of the code requirements, uh, posting the appropriate bond in the appropriate manners approved by staff and, uh, and parish council, and, um, and making sure that they comply with the, uh, with the environmental requirements to protect the off, the, the discharge of pollutants into public waterways.
We have a motion by Mr. Dumas, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Dudley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Yea.
Aye. So we need a, a roll call vote, Mr. Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Mr. Chasson?
No.
Mr. Foster?
No.
All right, we have a motion that passes four to two. The motion carries. All right, uh, item number ten C, Legacy Oaks Second filing has been taken off the agenda, is that correct? Moving on to item eleven, staff report?
We have not, Tony.
Engineering?
I'm in the, I'm looking for my report in my bag.
Moving too quick for you tonight, too, apparently, I'm just trying to move through these things.
All right, I'm gonna have to ad lib here. Um, basically, at, at this point, um, my summary is just to word, see where we are in, um, the development process of various projects. There's probably about five projects right now subdivisions are in active construction, so I anticipate in a couple of months you'll have some more final plat requests. There are about five sets of subdivisions in a construction plan review process, and there's approximately four to six other projects that have completed the preliminary plat process but have not yet submitted that first set of construction plans, so. So, grand total is about fifteen projects I would consider active subdivision-wise that are in our three separate phases.
Thank you, sir, anything else from the staff? Do you wanna recognize Mr. Ken Dawson? He's in upper levels of the parish government here tonight, thank you for being here, sir. All right, nothing else on the agenda, do we have a motion to adjourn? By Mr. Dumas, we will adjourn and take up zoning in a few minutes.